We move along to resolution that was proposed. I don't know how formally or not at the last meeting, adopting rules for agenda setting and conducting business at council meetings. Now, we don't have Josh Nathan here. Do we want to proceed with this?
I'm happy to.
Yeah. I think, you know, we can proceed with it. Essentially, I'll just summarize it a little bit and then we can talk about it. So, and a lot of this I said last week, but it's very short. It was true, this was, everyone's had this now for two weeks. It was drafted principally by Josh Nathan and myself, with assistance from our corporate council. We received input from a number of council members. It was made available to everybody two weeks ago. I've gotten basically feedback from everyone but the mayor on this. The purpose is, the council has not had rules to govern how we set agendas, conduct meetings, how we vote on actions. We think, you know, in their, you know, we think these rules will help, provide some guidelines, help us work together better by further underscoring the mayor's and the council's powers and responsibilities, who does what, how do we do it, et cetera. We also think these rules will help the public better understand and follow what we do. In short, as we say in the whereas clauses, we believe the resolution will help us enhance good governance, transparency, civil discourse, in the conducting of council business. And I'd urge all the council members to approve it. I don't think, this resolution does not, is consistent with the charter. It is consistent with the charter. I don't think it really changes sort of the day-to-day process, except for in a few areas, which I don't think are burdensome or onerous. But what I do think they'll do is, I do think they'll help everybody kind of understand how we go about getting ready for meetings and how to conduct ourselves in meetings. I think, you know, a number of us have thought that this is something that would be helpful. Nothing's set in stone. If we find out later on that, you know, this is not worth it, or parts aren't worth it, we can always change it. It's not legislation, it's how we want to conduct ourselves. It's sort of like the Senate rules for the Senate, or rules for the House. This is how the council would like to conduct themselves. And so, so this is our second meeting, talking about it. Julie asked for a pause, and the mayor wasn't here in the last meeting. Looks like the mayor has prepared a number of things he wants to say about it, and so I'm happy to yield the floor to you. But I think this is something we do want to do, and we have, I think we have a majority to do it, but happy to hear what you have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. I took a while, but I did prepare comments. Unfortunately, my internet seemed to be rain-affected, so I have.
Need cell towers down there?
I have gotten copies for, I think, everyone. And so, I'll, I'll, I'll read. These proposed rules came to my attention in advance of our meeting a week ago with an insistence that they be put on the agenda right away. And apparently, they were intended to be acted on at that meeting, but for the efforts of Julie Sousa to point out the inconsistency between that intent and the proposed rules themselves on significant action. These proposed rules are a mix of what already exists and change, some important in how the council and mayor work together. If change is desired, it should be studied long and hard, and by more than a couple of council members. This matter should be tabled and studied, certainly at least until we're past our nursery field decision. These proposed rules will slow the already too-slow municipal process. They lack needed flexibility. They will require excessive and inefficient council action. They attempt to take from the mayor prerogatives of office that have been in place for decades, whether or not found in charter or code. As former Mayor Sack said about these rules in particular, "You can't legislate mutual trust and respect. Trying to write all these rules is a symptom of the problem, not a fix of the problem. I can only imagine that debate over this proposal is going to make things worse. My advice would be to scrap this resolution and just keep the lines of communication open." Former Mayor French agrees with that. He also believes that if changes are made, they should be by 7-0 vote. Former Councilman Terry McCartney said, "The people of Rye elected a mayor to lead the city and the council, and this ill-advised micromanaging resolution would undermine the mayor's ability to lead." Emily Hurd sent me something, I think she has sent it to everyone. It says, and Emily Hurd is a former councilwoman, "I'm disheartened by the recent proposal to alter the manner in which the mayor sets the agenda, makes appointments, et cetera. The current process has worked well for the city for decades, even through periods of strife on the council. As a former city councilperson, I appreciate how hard this role, that is mayor, can be, especially when there are divergent views and different personalities. I believe it is shortsighted to install new procedures, and I urge the city council to put this resolution and personal resentments aside, and work harder to work together, and focus on the serious issues facing the city. These rules come from a new majority coalition led by two who were constituents of an opposition coalition that was consistently outvoted. I believe that is their underlying grievance and hardly a basis to hamstring the council or attempt to tear up mayoral prerogative going forward. Note that this new majority has gone so far as to abruptly fill a council seat without meaningful warning to the council minority, and similarly to institute the so-called pause now hanging over the nursery field gift. So let's put aside any claims of being unable to use existing council process. In view of other demands upon my time, I've been able to comment only at macro level. I hope there will be an opportunity to continue with adequate time. So, agenda contents and mayoral discretion. The Rye mayor is separately elected by the residents, he's not chosen by the council. The Rye mayor is per charter the head of the government and presides over the city council. Several years ago, prompted by an executive order requiring action by the city's CEO, lawyers for the city determined that the mayor is chief executive officer. We, of course, have a city manager who is chief administrative officer. Mayor gets a draft agenda from the city manager, questions items, adds or subtracts items, and puts the items in order for the meeting. Anyone is free to ask the mayor to add to the agenda, and certainly, this mayor takes account of whether the addition will be of interest to sufficient council members for it to be worthwhile.
Mr. Mayor, is it?
If the mayor, may I?
Do you want to finish? I have a specific question about that.
If the mayor does not add the item, it has always been the case that it can be raised in the meeting upon the seconded motion of a council member. Past administrations have used a practice of having votes in old business, new business, on whether to put new matters raised in that item on the agenda for the next council meeting. This seems like a convention worthy of consideration. Standard contents, mayoral rearrangement of order. Several agenda items are proposed to be standard and fixed in place. A few of them likely always would be, though never say never. During COVID virtual meetings, we had no flag, and so I removed the pledge, for example. In any case, the mayor has had and should have discretion in presiding, including with respect to items and order. The latter order should take into account variables, such as number of anticipated attendees, paid consultants, and staff waiting. Special meetings. It's fine to say that in scheduling, in scheduling, attempts should be made to maximize participation. In addition, council members should bear best efforts obligation to attend special meetings. The draft erroneously claims that Open Meetings Law 104 supports 72 hours' public notice, but really, Open Meetings Law 104 requires 72 hours' notice only if a meeting is scheduled a week in advance. Otherwise, 104 simply imposes a practicable, reasonable standard, which we, of course, should use when appropriate. Agenda timing and amendment. The common goal of mayor and staff is to have the agenda out by close of business Friday before the meeting, without any need to amend it. That said, in my experience, there's been a diverse array of missing items, questions unanswered, late-breaking matters, et cetera, that have made the agenda late, or required amendment of the agenda. Fixed deadlines and impediments to amendment will do nothing other than slow municipal progress overall. The council does not meet that often. We should be aiming to use our limited meeting time well. Executive session agenda. Another agenda, double the pleasure, double the fun. No objection to a reasonable effort here to provide a topic list, so long as it's understood that it, the topics may change. Open Meetings Law 105 does not call for the public to get a general description of the topics to be discussed in executive session, as the proposal claims. Open Meeting Law 105 merely requires that the general area of the topic within the statutorily permitted topic list be stated. Appointments. At present and in the past, so far as has been discerned, virtually all members of city commissions, boards, and committees have been appointed by the mayor with a council approval that has been a formality. The proposal calls for names and biographical descriptions, whatever they may be, to go to the council in advance. Are we really going to make the challenging process of finding appropriate volunteers the subject of council food fights and deal-making? Are we going to make the mayor round up evidence that likely will have no effect on outcome? The proposers apparently did research and say that in some cases, committee founding resolutions call for appointment by the council without the mayor, and at least, in at least one case, appointment by the mayor without the council. Some of this may be error, some may follow from a committee being intended to be temporary and not in need of continuing appointments. In any case, it has not been practiced, and further, in any case, I suggest one rule that all be subject to mayor with council approval. If any remain just council, however, and if a name and bio in advance rule is imposed on mayoral appointments, then the council must bear the same burden and have that same information in the hands of each council member in advance of a vote. Assignment of council members to liaison roles on committees has traditionally been handled by the mayor. It requires consideration of seniority, developed relationships, and individual preferences. The proposers say the council should do it. How? Assignment of willing council members to council subcommittees, where we're limited to three to comply with the Open Meetings Law, has been the mayor's prerogative, again, subject to similar considerations, as well as the mayor's effort to choose people who will get the job done. Again, make this a council football? Who will actually be the decider? Conducting council business. To the extent not commented on previously, note the following. The proposal seems to reduce the presiding mayor's role to calling the meeting to order, asking people to stand for the pledge, and watching a timer on certain speakers. This is not the common or customary in Rye concept of presiding. In addition, a filibuster would be permitted under these rules. But generally, these rules are solutions in search of a problem. Significant council action. There are insignificant legislative actions, so to impose on council or mayor discretion, but, or, sorry, so, please impose on council or mayor discretion, but not a wooden rule on legislative actions. And change the number of council members to impose to three. Finally, reservation of rights and waiver. Please amend the first sentence so it speaks to laws, regulations, practices, and procedures. Second sentence, I do appreciate a sentence that says we mean it only when we mean it. Thank you for listening. I'm happy to respond to people. If people want to think about it, we can pick it up. I would suggest the next time there's a full council here, or better, after our nursery field decision.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, there's a lot to absorb here, Mayor. And I, for one, would like to have some time to absorb this.
Thank you.
I'm fine waiting till we have all seven.
Okay, we could do this when we have all seven here. A couple of things, Mr. Mayor, that I might take exception to you. I mean, part of, one of the issues here has been, this is, these are, this is a council meeting, and we think council members should have a right, if two council members or more want to put something on the agenda, they could call a special meeting. Why make them call a special meeting? They should have the right to put something on the agenda, and there's nothing in the charter that says the mayor prepares the agenda by himself and he has control of the agenda. It's the council's agenda, it's not the mayor's agenda. So I take exception to what you're saying there. I think appointments, I don't really understand why it's so difficult to tell people who you want to appoint before you announce the name on the dais. I mean, this has been something that I raised with you, probably the second meeting I was here, two years ago. It's a matter of respect to other council people to understand who you're thinking of appointing, and to know who they are. I don't think it's, 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 there's any kind of burden for you to tell people in advance who you're appointing, and, and, and that's been the practice in the past with other mayors. Liaisons, I don't think, I don't think it's such a big deal for the council to get together and decide, well, whose talents should best serve on what committees. I don't think the mayor is in a special position to make that judgment. I think we all could make that judgment. I think we all know what our skills are. When I was out, when I was on the council, I was told, "You're going on this committee and that committee." I didn't even know that you didn't have the power to really appoint liaisons, because it's really not specified in the charter. So, so again, I think a lot of this is really kind of fixing what are the roles and responsibilities. I don't think it really changes anything of the day-to-day, or putting the agenda together. It gives some helpful guidelines, so we don't have a lot of changing agendas, and the public can know when we're doing, when we're taking up matters and what they are. So, so I think a lot of the things that you're saying here aren't necessarily, I wouldn't agree with them. I could go through the whole list, but I'm just hearing it for the first time. I've had two weeks, we've had two weeks for you to get us comments. You're giving them to us right now on the dais. It would have been helpful to have them earlier, and we probably could have gotten through a lot of these already.
Sure, I, I understand that, Bill. I had other things to do, and I have put a good deal of time into this, and I assume you and Josh Nathan spent a good deal of time on this in preparation. Also, delivering comments on the agenda would not be dissimilar to some of the things that you and others on this council have done, though committees have asked for comments.
But it's not your agenda, Mr. Mayor, it's our agenda. We should be able to put things on the agenda.
This, for, and, and you can, and, and you.
Not always.
Oh, Bill, you're, you're still out of sorts about your, your persistent pursuit of the Rye Golf Club.
No, that's over.
That's not what I heard from people that you've spoken to about this, and so we should touch on it. At the end of 2022, you said yes to a budget, and you recognized RGC's road rates for the year, and you recognized that we would deal with transparency in a later meeting, and you said that.
Now, it's a personal attack, is that what we're doing now?
This is, no, this is.
Is this a personal attack?
This is fact. This is just, this is just.
But what's the relevance?
The relevance is that, as I've spoken to people about what your complaints are, and as you have said, "Well, you've had trouble putting things on the agenda," I am going to, the one example that I'm aware of, where you have had trouble, and you have articulated this to, for instance, former Mayor Sack. And that's why, that's why I am responding and, and will continue. So, you did ask the Rye Golf Club whether they would consider changing their rates going forward, but you recognized that they need not. At that February meeting where only transparency was on the agenda, you raised again their rates, and when they said they had not made any changes, you harangued them, and I asked you to stop.
I didn't harangue anybody.
Fine.
So, so that's not a personal attack?
Then, then, then to, then to, to go on, we had decided Rye Golf Club's rates, they were in the budget, and we had also decided that we would take both enterprise funds rates out of the budget, and that we would look at them early in August, I'm sorry, in October, rather than leaving them within the budget process. Even so, in April, you wanted another bite at the apple, and you wanted to put the Rye Golf Club on the agenda again, to talk again about their rates going forward, despite the fact that they were in the budget, despite the fact that they were already out getting members, despite the fact that you.
And that they were patently unfair.
Despite the fact that, that, in your opinion, despite the fact that you had acknowledged their rates and the budget at the end of the year in a letter to the council. And so, yes, I resisted, you threatened a special meeting, you indicated you had three council members, and I said, "Okay, we'll put it on the agenda."
So, let's just, do you have more? I'm sorry.
Well, to answer Bill's question, assignments to committees, I was not aware that Bill was unhappy, but I think in assignments to, the last assignments to committees I made, Jamie and Keith, I tried to give them each one of the things they expressed a preference for, and one of the things that was unmoored.
But, Mr. Mayor, you have no right to make those assignments, and there should be a discussion. It's, it's, there's nothing in the charter that gives you the right to do that.
Bill, Bill, this is what mayors have, in Rye, have been doing for, as far as I know, in excess of four decades. And I'm sorry that this cramps your style, but I also don't think that the council really has an ability to, quote, "get together," as you say, and decide, because the council is restricted by the Open Meetings Law and can't meet in groups of more than three.
What about this regarding liaisons? You can say, okay, what, just what I did to you, for you, is I said, "There's going to be some liaison openings. These are areas that I have strength, and I would like to be on, I think I could serve Rye, I could serve the city council best, by being appointed to this liaison position." Right? That, that's what happened, right?
Yes.
And then you appointed me. So.
And Jamie, Jamie did the same.
Okay, I don't know if she really wanted to be golf, but that's another.
Nobody gets everything they want.
Okay, I understand that, but the thing is, it's helpful to have someone that actually has interest in golf, knows the sport, knows that there's actually 18 holes, actually, I'm pretty sure you do know there's 18 holes, but the thing is, knows the sport, and Bill being sustainability, he really has a lot of interest in sustainability. So, you know what, I don't think it's a good match. That's not a good match. But the thing is, this is something, you know, Mayor Sack said, "We can't legislate mutual trust and respect." But the thing is, what we need, I did not like this meeting tonight. I didn't even want to be here at this meeting tonight. My son was playing lacrosse, and I really wanted to go to his game. But it wasn't that I really wanted to go to his game, because I didn't want to be part of this. I didn't want to be part of this last fall. All of a sudden, I decided I was going to run for city council, and then all of a sudden, I start showing up to meetings, and I see the hostility that goes on here. I have enough hostility and issues in my life, I don't need to be coming here to pile onto it. As far as tonight, I didn't like what went on here tonight. But the thing is, if that's the way things need to be, I'll play that game, what went on tonight, for the next year, the next two years, the next three years, the next four years, but I don't want to be part of that. We need to all get together, respect each other, and deal with it. We need to go in, which I was saying through the entire campaign all last fall, I was talking about civil discourse and respect for one another on the council. That's what I spoke about, I talked to everybody about that. I didn't talk to a lot of other issues, I didn't talk about flooding, I talked about anything. I talked about fixing what was going on here, because it was disgusting what was going on here. Tonight was a disgusting meeting. It was a really poor, poor representative of who we are as Rye citizens, and who we are as elected officials here. It shouldn't have happened like that. But the thing is, people didn't want to listen to what other people had to say, with they, whatever they said was wrong. That has to change. As far as this is what Bill put together, I don't see, you know, you want to, you want to complain about every single thing that he put together? I really don't see what he put down on paper. It's just, it's what should be going on here, how we should be interacting. As far as the agenda issue, obviously, he has some issues with the agenda. I haven't had him yet, because I've only been here a couple of months, and maybe I'll be here for a couple more months, but if it keeps on like this, maybe I won't be. But the thing is, we need, it was some type of a guideline, some type of a structure for us to be working with. Is he, is all of a sudden Bill going to be sitting here, I don't think it's Bill, is he all of a sudden going to be saying, "Mayor, we just passed this, and you're doing this, and you can't do that?" I don't think he's going to be micromanaging it. What it is, it's a, it's somewhat of a format for us to live by and work by, because we need to work together. We can't have this, granted, nursery field is potentially a one-off situation, hopefully we don't come into another issue like that again, but from what I hear, that cell towers was a little bit contentious, but maybe we'll be back there again, because we need to visit cell towers.
No, unfortunately, it's not a one-off, and, and you make, I think, what Bill and, I'm assuming Josh Nathan, who helped write this, what they were trying to do was, as you say, provide structure, to provide an objectivity to, to what has been a very contentious, dysfunctional last six years. And the public has noticed it, and council members have noticed it, and staff have noticed it, and it's. it, and it's, it's a goal. The goal is to provide, to lower the emotional aspect of it, and just provide some structure that we can all understand, but most importantly, that the public can understand, that there is an attempt, because I think what I would say, everybody who has had some interaction with the council agrees that the dysfunction is just, it's really sad. So, what I read in, when I read this draft, was an attempt to address that, and say to our residents, you know, we're trying to make, we're trying to at least minimize the emotions and the rancor. And so, I feel that it comes from a very, very good place. It's a place that's trying to solve our major problem, because this Nursery Field is not the only issue that has caused such divisiveness, and it shouldn't be this way.
So I think we have sort of general consensus to push this a bit, so can we just do that? And then I would like to make...
Well, I'd like to push it to the next meeting, but I don't want to push it further than that. So I'd like to set this on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, well, do you need to be here for this? Can we count you as a no vote?
I think that you should be here for the vote. I think we all should be here. I think what we need to do as far as the liaisons, I really, really strongly feel that it's not a big issue, and it shouldn't even have been, it's one thing, there may be some things in here that, I don't know, maybe you have some valid points, but the thing is, by the simple, this simple, simple request, it's, that's just offering a little respect for people that are actually...
Work on those.
No, no, just listen, please. See, that's another issue I'm talking. So, the simple request is that provide a bio to the people that you want to appoint. Why is that such a, why is that an issue? Why is that a problem? It's just a simple, it's respectful. You're asking us, our responsibility is to approve your appointment. How can we approve your appointment if you say, hey, Joe Cunningham, I'm going to point him to this? Everybody, you saying yes or no? I don't know who this guy is.
Okay.
How, why is that an issue, that you can't provide a bio of the people and give us a week, or at least a day or two, on who this person is, so we can actually have an opinion and vote on?
Can I make a suggestion?
Why is that difficult?
Because we can go on all night about this. Let's figure out when the next date is, when everyone's going to be here, and we can trade dates among ourselves and figure that out, and that's when I'd like to take this up again, if that's okay. And what I, I lost my train of thought, I, well, now I got it back. So, what I would say, Mr. Mayor, is why don't we sit down, you, me, and Josh Nathan, we can get together, three of us, let's sit down and go through this together, instead of not hearing it from you for two weeks, and then having a public statement on the dais, and see if we can work through these things, and figure out if this is something we all can live with. You might be surprised, you know, and maybe we'll be surprised, and we're happy to take suggestions from you if you think something is wrong or off. I think that was what I was hoping would happen before now, but let's, if you're willing to sit down with the two of us and do that, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so in terms of...
Would you be willing to do that?
Of course.
Okay, great.
In terms of a date, we have, second meeting in March, Julie's not here. We have April 3rd, which I believe is the ultimate date for the, for the pause.
No, it's the second meeting in Mar, it's the second meeting in March right now.
We're going to have to change it, because Julie won't be here.
Julie, Julie won't be here, then there's April 3rd, and people won't be here, and so let's make it the second meeting in April.
I think, hold on, I got, I've never written down somewhere.
Wait, we're not pushing Nursery Field to the end of April. This is crazy town.
I'm not sure, I'm talking about this.
Right.
Well, I think we're going to, the same rule will apply for Nursery Field. I mean, we have to have, I think we want to have everybody here for a vote. I think you really want to have everyone here for a vote.
If we could just pass a hybrid law, that would be great.
And I don't, I just had the dates of when a few people were, I think everybody is supposed to be here on the 17th of April. So we could, we could take both these matters up on the 17th of April. You still have plenty of time. In fact, I don't think, because of Nursery Field and the restrictions on when you could start doing the work, I don't think any, I don't think you start running into a scheduling problem until June. Certainly, April's early enough.
I do not want, I do not want to push Nursery, we're only talking about this right now, so let's just deal with that. Let's put this till the April 17th meeting, and then we'll go from there. I agree with that; I second that motion. April 17th, for this issue to come back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.